Recording in progress. Okay, everyone, let's start the meeting. I think we have quorum. Uh, so, good evening, everyone. Welcome back from our recess. And it's been a bit of a recess, um, with everything that's been happening at all sorts of levels. So I'm gonna call this meeting to order today, Tuesday, September second. At seven P M. This is a virtual meeting of the mayor and council is a legislative meeting. Call to order. Uh, Joseph.
Present.
Valerie?
Yes.
Jenny?
Present.
Danielle?
Here.
Okay, everybody is here. Valerie, can you help me with the pledge allegiance, please?
Uh, yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We're gonna move on to item number two. We had Adme Quorum and we just, uh, finished the pledge of allegiance. Item number two is review of the agenda. It's a five minute, uh, or less. Uh, the mayor and council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussions. Valerie, can go ahead and do it for me, please.
Um, yep. So this is the agenda of the legislative meeting of the mayor and city council for the city of Mount Rainier on Tuesday, September second, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. One, call to order, pledge of allegiance. We just did that. Two, review of the agenda, five minutes. The mayor and council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Number three, mayor and council member event announcements. Number four, presentation of closed session, five minutes. The mayor and council will receive the closed session summary for June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, from Vice Mayor Valerie Woodall. Number five, uh, public comment. Um, please see page three of the agenda where the rules for public comment are listed. If you wish to speak, please advise during the virtual meeting. Old business. Number six, appointment of Tracy Messer to the recreation committee, five minutes. The mayor and council will appoint Tracy Messer to the recreation committee for a two-year term. Business. Number seven, appointing members to the community garden committee, five minutes. The mayor and council will appoint, uh, members of the community garden committee for two-year terms. Number eight, first reading of resolution number oh five, twenty twenty-five, appointing a new resident agent for the city of Mount Rainier, ten minutes. The mayor and council will have the first reading of resolution number zero five dash twenty twenty-five. Nine, uh, first reading of resolution number zero six, twenty twenty-five, designating a public information act representative for the city of Mount Rainier, ten minutes. The mayor and council will have the first reading of resolution number zero six, twenty twenty-five. Number ten, first reading of resolution number zero seven, twenty twenty-five, vice mayor rotation, ten minutes. The mayor and council will have the first reading of resolution number zero seven dash twenty twenty-five. Eleven, first reading of resolution number eight, oh, um, I'm sorry, number eight dash twenty twenty-five, proclaiming number, November fourteenth as Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day in the city of Mount Rainier, ten minutes. The mayor and council will have the first reading of resolution number zero eight dash twenty twenty-five. Twelve, presentation of minutes, five minutes. The city clerk will present the following minutes to the mayor and council, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, um, and June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Number thirteen, vote on approval of minutes. Mayor and council will vote to approve minutes, uh, for June third, twenty twenty-five, the legislative meeting. And number fourteen, adjournment.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there anything that needs to be deleted out of this agenda?
Um, may I would like to remove the. Sorry, I would like to, um, remove number seven, uh, appointing members to the community guarding committee. I will come back to the council with that at a later date.
All right, perfect. Uh, Millie, can you make a note of that, please? Thank you. Anything else? Uh, delete? All right, hearing, uh, none. Um, that was number eight, right? Okay, so if that was number seven, that number seven will be deleted and everything else will be bumped up one up, okay? And, uh, Millie, as our clerk, um, will follow up to make sure that everything's trending as such, okay? So we don't have to do nothing in our end. All right, perfect. Keep putting the top of it. Thank you, Millie. All right, moving on to item number three, mayor and council member events and announcements. All right, let's start with war one. Jenny, go ahead.
Um, nothing coming up immediately, but walk, ride, and roll to school day will be October eighth at Thomas Stone Elementary.
I think it's a national event. It might be like Thomas Stone and Mount Rainier and Caesar Chavez, all three schools. Yeah, thank you, Jenny. All right, Danielle?
Um, yes, uh, September twenty-second, the fourth Monday of the month, is the, uh, monthly meeting of the CERT team, the Community Emergency Response Team. They are always looking for new community members who are interested in getting trained and assisting the community, um, in their time of need. The meeting will begin on the fourth Monday on September twenty-second at seven thirty P M. at the police community room. Thank you.
Um, Joseph, Valerie?
Sure, I'll go first. Um, on, uh, Saturday, September sixth at eleven P M., we're going to have a community conversation at Thirty First Street and Perry, uh, concerning the Perry Street Intersection Improvement Project, Phase Two. Uh, so, e- especially if you live near there or just interested in what's been going down at the, at Perry right before you head eastern, stop by at eleven on the sixth.
Thank you so much. Joseph, Valerie?
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, the recreation committee meets on September eleventh at six thirty. Um, and the next event for the recreation committee is the, I'm sorry, the porch fest on, on September twenty-seventh, um, uh, from four to seven, so that should be fun. Um, please reach out to the recreation committee if you're interested in performing or have a porch to share, uh, with your fellow residents. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And can you bring it down? There you go. So, uh, Valerie, like, discussed the porch fest, four to, four P M. to seven P M., reach out to Red Committee. Um, or in doubt, reach out to Valerie. She's the point person for the Red Committee, okay? Uh, moving on to Latina Heritage Month celebration will be October fourth from three to six. And we are joining forces with Joe Moment Emporium, as well as Casa and a couple of other, um, cool organizations, Arte Para Todos as well. And that's gonna be from three to six, and it's gonna be, um, in front of Joe's. So we're gonna close the street of Bunker Hill between thirty-third and thirty-four, leaving just an opening for parking. Um, we're going to be able to park for the businesses, uh, that are, that are on Bunker Hill, okay? And we also have Public Safety Night, the same exact night, uh, from five to nine, uh, the nature center. So you're gonna be having fun from us from three all the way to nine P M. in two different locations of the city. So we look forward to, um, look forward to seeing you guys there, okay? Plenty of fun. And, um, as for announcements, um, starting on our work sessions, uh, we are going back to having directors doing reports monthly. So we should be able to see our directors coming twice a month, um, twice, uh, twice a year to be able to, um, just give a little feedback and information to our residents. So that's coming up on the next work session. All right, and, um, we are also adding our city manager report for legislative meetings. So Mr. Kamali will also be giving a report at the legislative meetings as well. All right, uh, then that, you know, it's been an outstanding summer. Over a hundred forty-four, a hundred and forty ADA, uh, ramps have been placed. And even more, uh, streets and sidewalks and everything you could think of has been, um, accomplished. And we continue doing work. We're having the projects both on Nutron Street and Perry. Preface first, uh, one has already been completed. On September sixth, uh, War Two, uh, council members will be present for Phase Two. So, uh, if you have any questions, follow up, reach out to them and, um, give them your feedback. I'm around too. If you guys need a feedback, I will not be at the event. I have another meeting to attend. Uh, we split and conquer between all of us. Um, other than that, it's like we're looking forward to seeing the various, uh, storm water management projects and bring you guys more information. All right, so I think that is my feedback, my quick one for today. All right, Mr. Kamali, you wanna go ahead and add anything, uh, on your end?
Well, thank you. No, you, you covered everything and you gave the report for the city manager, so next month I don't have to be there.
Ne- next time I'm putting you before I even speak, okay?
No, it's all right. That just, you know.
I'll, I'll wrap up everybody's.
No, I appreciate that. No, everything is, everything you've covered and Joseph and everyone, we appreciate that.
So, uh, one thing that I didn't mention yet, uh, but today there was a two-hour delay, uh, for the city of Marinier to open their offices because we're getting, uh, solar panels. Mr. Kamali, can you talk to us, um, what buildings in the city are getting solar panels? Cause that's like outstanding news.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, last year, we applied for solar panels to be installed on five cities, building, including the city hall, the existing city hall, police department, public works, code enforcement, and library and pots hall. So the city has received four hundred thousand dollars, four-ten actually, being installing, uh, the solar panels on this city's building. We're gonna create some revenues. And, uh, right now, we just started the first location to be installed, which is the city hall. Then we're gonna go to P D or Public Works and I will keep everyone posted. That's another, uh, good grant for the city. We're going toward more green and clean energy. So hopefully, we get some good electric cars in the future. And then Joseph is gonna be happy with me. Make sure that we got everything taken care of.
Jo- Joseph and definitely I. So, uh, for some of you guys that are aware, part of the things that we're talking about that was the Vision Zero Plan that we have worked for zero fatalities by year twenty twenty-five, that's one plan. The other plan is the climate, uh, plan that we have. Actually, Joseph worked very heavily on the plan when it came to supporting us, but also when it comes to schools. So we're trying to make sure that we continue, um, adding the stripe. We added compost last fiscal year. We're making sure that solar panels are going through, so we're taking, making sure that we do as much as we can to advance our green initiatives in the city. And, um, it's cool, you know, because we're the first one, if not the first, one of the first cities to have solar panels in their city hall forever ago in our old city hall building, right? And now, uh, thank you, Mr. Kamali, and the whole entire team for making sure that the rest of the, uh, buildings are also, um, having solar panel. That's something that I know we had originally talked about during ARPA funding, cause we wanted to make sure that we work heavily on our infrastructure and making sure that, um, we found ways to not just like aim at our, like, you know, goals for the city, but also making sure that revenue was coming in even after, because we all knew our front money wasn't internal, so we do fit into the D C grid, which is outstanding for us. Uh, so, thank you, Mr. Kamali, the whole team for working on this, and please be patient as we might have delays, uh, in opening some of our city buildings as the panels are being added, okay? So, anything else, Mr. Kamali? We're good. I think I cover all of it. All right, perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, so now we're moving on to item number four, presentation of closed session. Mayor and council received a presentation of closed session for June nineteen, twenty twenty-five from, uh, Vice Mayor Woodall. All right, Valerie, the floor is yours.
You're muted.
Right, you're muted, Valerie.
Um, this is a statement of the summary of the closed session held on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Um, the time of the closed session was seven oh seven P M. Uh, place of closed session, uh, thir- thirty-five oh three Perry Street, Mount Rainier, Maryland, two oh seven one two. The purpose was, one, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. And number seven, to consult with council to obtain legal advice. Um, the, all five members, uh, voted aye. Uh, the motion was made by, um, C M. Hoffpower and C M. Woodall. Second motion, no members opposed and no members abstained. Um, and again, the descriptions of the topics, uh, was to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appoint, of appointees, um, employees or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, and any other personnel, uh, matter that affects one or more specific in, uh, individuals. Count, persons' presence for the discussion, uh, council member Woodall, Carter, Jacuta, Hoffpower, Mayor Benito, City Manager Kamali, and, uh, City Council, Alyssa Levan, uh, and no action was taken and no recorded vote. And then number seven, to consult council to obtain legal advice, council members Woodall, Carter, Jacuta, Hoffpower, um, Mayor Benito, City Manager Kamali, and Council, uh, Alyssa Levan, no action was taken. Um, uh, Mayor Benito's moved to, uh, exit the closed session, uh, Council Member Carter seconded the motion. The ayes were five, the nays were zero, and nobody abstained. The meeting was adjourned, uh, at eight sixteen P M.
Thank you so much, Valerie. And, uh, for those that are listening to us, we are up to date with our closed session summaries, and this was the last one that we had, uh, the last one we had. So it is customary for the next meeting that takes place for us to read the summary, and we are on track. All right, perfect. Moving on to item number five, public comment. Uh, please see page one of the agenda. Where the rules of, send me just, uh, to number five. I think my screen got dim and I have to figure out how to make it brighter again, so I feel like I'm reading in the middle of a dark room, so it's not helping. All right, I'll try to make it work. Rules for public comments. The mayor and city council buy and welcome, uh, comments of the public meeting. The mayor presiding officer will recognize you. Please introduce yourself, first and last name for recurring purposes, and give the name of your street and block number. For two, as an example, for three hundred block of Thirty Fourth Street, please indicate the chat whether you would like, um, the mayor to read your comment, or you will speak on your comment. Public comments has a time limit of three minutes for speakers, unless otherwise agree upon by the mayor. While speaking, please remain courteous, tone, and avoid personal attacks. If you wish to lodge and complain about a performance or contact of any city employee, please bring it to the attention of Mr. Kamali, who is our city manager, who will look into the matter and respond. As a courtesy to other residents, the businesses, council requests that speakers do not use a specific address or names of individual when describing a situation or making a complaint. Noting block is preferred over, uh, a specific address. All right, uh, so also, um, Millie, we need to add there, and I usually, I've been saying it verbally, that if you choose for me to read your comment, that is, um, your comment, uh, so you, um, it's not gonna be a a written comment and a verbal comment. That is your one shot, okay? So that we don't go back and forward. All right, so do I have any member of the public who wishes to make a comment? I add it to the chat? I feel like we need to have, like, elevator music or something in the background, right? As we wait. So I see no one. Um, anything on Facebook? Okay. Okay, seeing that there is none, I'll be closing the public comment at this time. And moving on to old business, item number six, appointment of Miss Tracy Mercer. Oof, Tracy, I'm so sorry if I butcher your last name. Um, Mercer to the recreation committee. American's appointment is, um, Mercer to the recreation committee, and this appointment is for two-year terms. This is a voting item. Uh, Valerie, I will see the floor to you, please.
Um, yes, thank you. Um, so Tracy is, she has served on the committee before and she is coming back now after a hiatus, and this will bring the recreation committee, the voting members of the recreation committee back to a full complement of five. Um, and so that's very exciting. Um, so I guess that's all I have to say. But thank you, Tracy. I don't see her here, but I know she's working with us closely, so.
Yeah, so thank you, Tracy, and the, uh, rest of the recreation committee. Uh, you guys definitely keep busy and you guys are, um, very creative, as well as the rest of our committee members. So, um, I will put, uh, motion on the floor to, as, uh, prove the appointment of Miss Tracy Mercer to the recreation committee. Can I have a second?
I second it.
Case probably moved and second. Any discussion? Objections, abstentions? Hearing none. Um, Ms. Mercer has been appointed to the recreation committee for a two-year term. Our clerk will keep in track. Um, our, our clerk is very good at keeping track of when we have to do stuff, so thank you guys so much for that. Ooh, my screen went blank. Um, you're, is the screen blank, Millie? Oh, it went to screen share.
We gotta fix it, right?
Okay, thank you so much. No worries. Um, we, we'll, um, we'll work on the little tiny hiccups that we do. Stay one. Uh, all right, so moving, um, so congratulations, Tracy, and thank you for volunteering to our committee. Uh, for new business, for those that you're not here, item number seven has been, um, the old item number seven had been, um, has been withdrawn from the agenda, and now we have a new number seven, which was the old number eight and everything else got bumped up. Thank you, Millie. I realized what you did. You, you updated it and, and switched the correct, so we had an accurate, uh, an agenda in front of. You're so great, Millie. I appreciate you. All right, item number seven, first reading of resolution, oh, uh, oh five, twenty twenty-five, appointing a new resident agent for the city of Mount Rainier. The mayor and council will have the first reading of the resolution. Can you go ahead and put it up? And for those that, uh, that were us, we'll tell you what, what it is, and usually we pick, um, um, our staff members, our high staff members, uh, to be able to do that, because the reality is we are not a city hall twenty-four-seven, and we should not be a city hall twenty-four-seven. So therefore, the staff is, uh, responsible for being able to, um, gather, protect, maintain, and secure, um, our legal documents at all times. Um, and that's the reason why this time to make sure the public knows who are those wonderful people that are in charge of this. All right, so this is the city of Mount Rainier, Maryland, Resolution oh five, twenty twenty-five, introduced, introduced by mayor and council. Appointment of a new resident agent for the city of Mount Rainier. Can you move it up? Valerie, you wanna take a, a dive on it, and then I'll do the rest if you want.
Uh, sure. Um, I put, okay, um, whereas Maryland Annotated Code, General Provisions, Article G P, uh, one dash one three oh one, requires political subdivisions of the state of Maryland to designate persons to serve as resident agents upon whom process, notice, and subpoenas to custodians of public record may be served under certain circumstances. And whereas, uh, the city of Mount Rainier, uh, Maryland is a political subdivision in the state of Maryland, subject to the requirements of G P, uh, one dash one three oh one, and, um, hold on one.
One, and whereas the mayor council deems it necessary and appropriate to appoint a new resident agent in accordance with the requirements of the state law, now therefore be resolved the city council of the city of Mount Rainier that Karush Kamali, one municipal place, Mount Rainier, Maryland, two seven one two, be and hereby appointed as resident agent for the city of Mount Rainier for all purpose required under G P one dash thirteen oh one, and be a further resolved that the city manager is authorized to sign and file with the State Department Assistant Sexion, all documents necessary for, for factuating this appointment. Um, this resolution be adopted by the city council, the city of Mount Rainier on this day, blah, blah. So do me a favor, Millie. My edit will be like what says, will be solved that, um, make sure you write Mr. Kamali's name right there. Um, Karush Kamali, city manager, is authorized on it, so that way it's clear that is, is him, okay? I know it's in the, in the paragraph in top, but that way I, I don't mind having it into location, so that was a clear. So that will, that will, when we send it to who it is, it's, um, hundred percent clear what it is. All right, so this is the regi- the resolution. Move it up. And this is first reading or vote, uh, Millie? Oh, first reading. All right, so, um, any questions? Counsel, thumbs up if you're good. If not, go around and see. No, 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 no. Um, I love you guys, but if you guys are in the screen, this is, this is your space. If you're right here, I don't see you. So if I see smiling, I'm assuming that you're good. All right, so we're gonna move it to second reading for, uh, next month, and, um, in the meantime, Mr. Kamali, you're still, uh, serving those functions, which basically anything that comes legal, like I said earlier, um, he's responsible for obtaining, filing, and getting to our legal team. Have fun, Mr. Kamali, right? Like, you don't have a lot of work to do already in the city of Mount Rainier. We add something else to your plate. All right, perfect. Moving on to item number eight. First reading of resolution, oh six dash twenty twenty-five, designing a public inform, uh, information act representative to the city of Mount Rainier. Mayor and council will have the first reading of resolution, oh six dash twenty twenty-five. You go ahead and put in the screen, Millie. Okay. You're back, Valerie?
Yes, sorry about that.
Go ahead.
All right, city of Mount Rainier, Maryland, Resolution oh six dash twenty twenty-five, introduced by mayor and council. Um, I'm sorry, introduced by mayor and city council, designated a public, designating a public information, uh, act representative for the city of Mount Rainier. All right, whereas the annotated code of Maryland General Provisions, Article four dash five oh three, requires each governmental unit that maintains public records to, one, identify a representative who, a member, uh, who is a member of the public should, I'm sorry, who a member of the public should contact to request public record. Two, maintain contact information for the governmental units representative. Three, post the contact information on the governmental units website. And four, annually update and submit contact information for the governmental's, you, governmental units representative to the office of the Maryland Attorney General. And whereas the city of Mount Rainier is a governmental unit that maintains public records. And whereas in accordance with the annotated code of Maryland General Provisions, Article four dash five oh three, the city wishes to appoint a public information act representative. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Mount Rainier, Maryland, that the following individual is appointed, uh, um, as public information act, P I A representative for the city of Mount Rainier. And the P I A representatives, representatives' contact information is Melissa Sam, city clerk, city of Mount Rainier, one municipal place, Mount Rainier, Maryland, two oh seven one two. Telephone number three oh one, nine eight five, six five eight five. Email cityclerk@mountrainiermd.org. City of Mount Rainier internet address, um, W W W dot mountrainiermd.org. Be it further resolved that the city manager or his designee shall submit, um, the contact A representative to the office of the Maryland Attorney General and post the contact information in a user-friendly format on the city's website. Uh, this resolution is adopted, yeah?
This resolution is adopted by the city council, blah, blah. So, uh, the other thing, uh, Millie, when you go back on it, I, I read, there was one, uh, the council. So either, uh, put mayor and council, because if not, the council reads like it's not mayor attached to it. So it's four, not five of us. All right, so that'd be my only edit to this one. All right, so, um, for this one information purpose, um, anything that's required with P I, uh, P I, um, Public Information Act, our clerk is usually assigned to do it. So they submit, and she's responsible for following up, submitted, and filing, and everything else that needs to be done. Again, it's none of the elected officials for obvious reasons. Um, so, uh, in this case, it's Melissa, and she is the keeper of the records under Mr. Kamali's, um, supervision as our, uh, city manager, okay? And that's basically what document is. And I think our clerks have been in this position as well for, I think, as long as I'm, as long as I've been in council, probably even longer than that, okay? Any, any discussion, counsel? Are we good? You all look good. All right, thank you guys so much. It's moving over to the October agenda, where it will be on for a vote as well. All right. Moving on to item number nine, first reading of resolution, oh dash seven, I'm sorry, seven, oh seven dash twenty twenty-five, vice mayor rotation, the mayor and council will have the first reading of a resolution, oh seven dash twenty twenty-five. oh seven dash twenty twenty five, vice mayor rotation, the mayor council will have the first reading of a resolution, oh seven dash twenty twenty five. All right, Valerie, can you help me with this one too? Thank you so much.
Yes, city of Mount Rainier, Maryland, resolution oh seven dash twenty twenty five, introduced by mayor and council. Um upcoming vice mayor rotation, whereas section three oh three B of the city of Mount Rainier Charter calls for the appointment of a vice mayor who shall perform the duties of the mayor during the absence or disability of the mayor. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Mount Rainier that, one, com- commencing at the legislative meeting of the city council on November fourth, twenty twenty five, and continuing until the last council meeting prior to November third, twenty twenty six, council member Daniel Carter, Ward one, shall serve as vice mayor. Two, commencing at the legislative meeting of the city council on November third, twenty twenty six, and continuing until the last council meeting prior to November second, twenty twenty seven, council member Joseph Jacuto, Ward two, shall serve as vice mayor. Three, at the uh legislative meeting of the city council on November two, twenty twenty seven, and continuing until the last council meeting prior to November seven, twenty twenty eight, council member Jenny Hoffpa- Hoffpower, Ward one, shall serve as a vice mayor. This resolution is adopted by the city council of the city of Mount Rainier on this day of twenty twenty five.
All right, thank you so much. Any discussion? Nope, we're good. Moving on to the next item. Where are we at? Oops, sorry. Now, item number ten, first ring of resolution, oh dash twenty twenty five, proclaiming November fourteen as Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day in the city of Mariner. Mayor Council will have the first ring of resolution, oh dash twenty twenty five. Can you go ahead and put it on screen? And this is gonna sound beyond familiar, because it was a proclamation before. Now we're turning into resolution, and my quest are turning all the other proclamations into resolutions. All right? And so this should be ready to vote for October if we're on agreement. All right, proclaiming November fourteen as Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day in the city of Mariner, introduced by Mayor Selena Benitez. Valerie, you ready?
All right, uh whereas on November fourteenth, nineteen sixty-six-year-old Ruby Bridges walked to the formerly all-white William France um elementary school in New Orleans, Louisiana, and integrated into the first elementary school in the south. And whereas United States Marshals had to escort young Ruby Bridges and her mother to school every day, where a crowd of people who did not want her at the school yelled at her. And whereas, as soon as Ruby Bridges entered uh the school, white parents pulled their children out, and all the teachers except one refused to teach while an African-American child was enrolled in the school. And whereas Ms. Barbara Barbara Henry was the only teacher that would teach Ruby Bridges, and for the entire year, Ms. Henry uh taught Ruby Bridges alone in the classroom. And whereas despite the threats and protests, the Bridges family was determined to keep sending Ruby to school, and she did not miss a school of class that year. And whereas Ruby Bridges' act of bravery inspired America and paved the way for other African-American children across the country, and whereas Ruby Bridges went on to graduate from a desegregated high school, marry and raise a family, and have a successful career. And whereas Ruby Bridges also wrote two books about her experiences as a child and received the Carter G. Woodson uh book award for her work. And whereas Bendis v. Westminster School District of Orange County nineteen forty-six is a historic uh uh I'm sorry, is a historic court case on racial segregation in the California public school system. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals ruled that it was unconstitutional and unlawful to forcibly uh seg- segregate Mexican-American students by focusing on Mexican ancestry, skin color, and the Spanish language. This case forged a foundation um upholding the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment, thereby strengthening the landmark Springport ruling in Brown v. Board of Education in nineteen fifty-four, which found racial segregation in public schools unconstitutional. And whereas the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, N double A C P, filed amicus uh friend of the court briefs, writing the, for the N double A C P was Thurgood Marshall, who five years later used similar reasoning before the Supreme Court in Brown v. Board of Education of Topeka. The Supreme Court adopted many of Marshall's arguments, and in nineteen fifty-four issued an opinion declaring that separating children in public schools on the basis of race was unconstitutional. The opinion was written by Chief Justice Earl Warren. And whereas in nineteen fifty uh four, Ruby Bridges was born, and the United States Supreme Court issued the landmark ruling in Brown v. Board of Education, ordering the desegregation of schools. And whereas in nineteen ninety-nine, Ruby Bridges established the Ruby Bridges Foundation to promote tolerance and create change through education. The Ruby Bridges Foundation supports schools across the country in their celebrations of Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day on November fourteenth each year, with more than six hundred and fifty thousand participants in twenty twenty-three. And whereas in Prince George's County and other Maryland communities, the struggle to successfully integrate public schools continued into the nineteen seventies and beyond. And whereas the story of Ruby Bridges is an important continuation of Maryland native uh Thurgood Marshall's legacy and his work on Brown v. Board of Education to make quality equal education uh available to everyone. And whereas the city of Mount Rainier is committed to continuing our work to become a more inclusive city in which all the community, past, present, and future, are treated equally with dignity and respect. And whereas uh both Mount Rainier Elementary School and Thomas S. Stone Elementary School, the city's uh city of Mount Rainier's two neighborhood public schools are proud participants in Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day and longtime champions of walkability and equality. Now therefore be it resolved that the, by the city of council and the city of the city of Mount Rainier, that November fourteenth is hereby proclaimed as Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day in the city of Mount Rainier to be recognized annually on this date uh in those years. When November fourteenth falls on a Saturday or Sunday, Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day will be celebrated on the following Wednesday. The city council encourages all residents to participate in this celebration and to honor the rich history and cultural significance of Ruby Bridges' story.
All right, thank you guys so much. Uh thank you, Valerie. Uh any discussion? Nope, we're good. Moving on to the next item. Thank you guys so much. I know you guys are eager to finish this meeting too. Uh moving on to item number eleven. Yes?
Joseph had his hand up.
I'm sorry?
I wasn't as, I wasn't quick on the draw, oh mayor.
Oh, sorry, I moved it. Go ahead, Joseph.
I just wanted to say it's really important to take these issues presented in this resolution seriously. Uh a child was uh hit in Marlow Heights in Prince George's County on Friday, walking home from school. So there's, we we need to do what we can to make sure um people are aware, especially in our community, about the need for children to be able to get to and from school safely. And I'm glad to see that this resolution is on the table.
Thank you so much, Joseph. Uh we definitely um um send our condolences to the families. Um about a year ago, also two children were um involved in accident where they passed in the Riverdale uh community as well. I I think that it definitely um raised a lot of awareness. Unfortunately, like, you know, things like this continue to happen. So it's not enough to tell the kids, you know, bike rolled uh to school. It's also important to make sure we follow it uh with rules and policies and everything else. And I think at least for the city of Mariner, we have walk or walk and talk or talk when it comes to like um, you know, investing heavily on it, so um charges like this should not be happening, right? Especially when it comes to a a simple kid who was just underway to school at times, you know, nothing else, so coming home from school down. But I think that is is aside from the kids, it's also like the families that go with them will come back or commute back and forward, right? So for a lot of our cities, especially for our city, um most of our city, I will say if it's like ninety-nine point nine percent of our city is in a school zone, right? So I think it's important to make sure that we abide by the traffic laws and the rules. And sometimes trying to get fast somewhere could mean like the difference between the life of of somebody. And um and that's what's important. So thank you for bringing it up, uh Joseph. I definitely appreciate it, okay? And so November fourteen, Walk to School Day for Ruby Bridges will be taking place. So mark it in your calendars.
All right, so moving on to item number eleven, presentation of minutes. The city clerk uh will present the following minutes to mayor and council, June seventeen, twenty twenty five, special legislative meeting, public hearing and work session. June nineteen, twenty twenty five, special legislation meeting. Both of them are in your package and um review them. You have questions, send them over to Melly. Um who will send the two rest of us to see if we uh if we agree on the changes submitted. Um take into account that is um a point minute of it. Uh we do require meetings for a specific record, um so it's not like word by word on those minutes. All right, so uh moving on to item number twelve. Vote on approval of minutes. The mayor and council will vote on approving the minutes for June third legislative uh meeting. And these minutes were presented in our June work session. You guys have like um seen them, had them, and enjoyed them for quite a bit of time, okay? So uh motion uh to approve the minutes for June third twenty twenty-five legislative meeting.
I'll move it.
Well, second it.
Well, you guys didn't have to move it, because I moved it, but it's fine. Move it in second.
I'll second.
We're we're little rusty, it's all right, equally. All right, so any discussion? Any objections, abstentions? Hearing none, the minutes for June third have been approved. Thank you guys so much. And now moving on to item number thirteen. Uh German, can I have a motion to adjourn, seven thirty-eight PM?
So moved.
No, I put a motion, so you you motion.
Seconds.
No. This, you don't so move, so you make the motion. I say, can I have a motion? So you say, I motioned to blah blah blah.
Oh, I motioned to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, any seconds?
I'll second it.
Thank you so much. The meeting has been, any discussion? Objection, abstentions, hearing none. This meeting has come to an end at seven thirty-nine PM. So thank you guys so much, and thank you to our staff that I know has been working ridiculously amount of hours to um not just create this meeting, but also make sure we've been working overtime to make sure we um we get those event going um that's coming up. So we will see you very soon. Uh we're two uh this Saturday, and for the rest of the crew, um for Latino Heritage Festival and Safety Night. All right, thank you guys so much. Have a good night. Thank you, team.